Dave Burris. JR Huddleston.
Here.
Debra Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Present.
Caitlin Turner. Linda Varvel.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As always, counsel, please remember conflicts of interest. If you have anything that you need to abstain from, please let the counsel know before you vote. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the minutes from the December 20th meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the December 20th council meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. I need a motion for the bills in between.
Make a motion to approve the bills in between of $120,991.29.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion on the current claims.
I make a motion to approve the current claims of $155,892.92. And the 2001 accounts payable of $124,040.21.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims.
I make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims of $5,322.88.
Second, a motion.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Have a council update from Peggy with the public library.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Nope.
You gotta go right up to the mic.
Yeah, and you can move it if you need to, to get closer to your mouth.
Yep. Thank you. Good evening. Happy New Year to you all. Library update. We now have 26,000 materials. Circulation this year was 33,000. We have 3,300 patrons. We have over 100 to 200 people come in daily and use our library. We have 15 public computers. And this year, we had over 8,000 Wi-Fi hits that were either in the parking lot or if somebody brought their own laptop in. And the sessions usually ran about an hour and a half with that hit. I want to thank the street department for all their help in getting our Christmas decorations in and out. And they're always there to clean the street and to clean the sidewalks off for us. So I really appreciate them. The water department helped us out. We had two sinks that were clogged up and a water fountain that didn't work. And they worked really hard to get all that done for us. So I appreciate them. And I appreciate all of you and the community for supporting us. And all of the friends that put in all kinds of volunteer hours for us. Any questions? Craig?
In the paper, letter to editor, can you explain that?
Oh, yes. Are you talking about all the evil we have in the library?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. That wasn't even, it's not even noteworthy, but there is evil everywhere, Craig. It's your choice to find it or not.
I just thought maybe you'd like-
And it's totally up to the parents to what the children read.
It's one of my favorite genres to read. I really enjoy your young adult section of the library. It's really good.
Thank you. Yes, we do have very nice selection.
Peggy, you know that to request the mayor, I went down and saw the video. And, yeah, I agree. Yes.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else?
I didn't see the video, but I agree too.
Okay. You come up anytime you want, Craig.
Thank you for everything you've, thank you for everything you do.
Oh, you're more than welcome.
We're so glad that you stepped in and are keeping things going so well.
Thank you, Deb. Appreciate it. I had to buy a winter coat and I had to buy winter boots. Don't you feel sorry for me? You're prepared.
Does she have a clothing allotment, like all the rest of the city? No?
No.
Just thought I'd ask.
I told my, I told my buddy I'd give him a shout-out. So thanks for taking care of my little buddy. I appreciate it.
We, we love your little buddy. Anything else?
I would just like to add what some of the council members have said. We appreciate you coming back to what we consider home and helping us through this, this time. It's appreciated. And as they were talking about the change with the children's reading room, after you and I had talked and had a chance to, you know, review why you and the library board were recommending the change, I fully support it. So thank you for bringing that to our attention and getting us back to where we should have been.
Thank you very much, Bob. I appreciate it. I was just, I was in the grocery store the other day and somebody comes up to me to tell me about the wonderful author that they found in the library. Brand new to them. And I think it's so exciting that when you go to a grocery store, you get new authors. All right, have a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Bye, Peggy.
Communications from the public. Is there anyone that would like to chat with the council? Jerry, you look like you were getting ready to move. No? All right. Nobody that wants to address the council? All right. Well, thank you for attending. Brings us to personnel actions. Can I get a motion to approve personnel actions A through H?
Make a motion to approve personnel action A through H.
Second.
James. I second.
Oh, I got Larry as a second.
That was me. He, he seconded it. I read it out and he seconded it.
I don't think he said second, though, did you?
No.
Yeah.
Nope. He read it same time I did.
Larry said second.
I was amplifying for Craig, is what I was doing.
I got moved by Romi, seconded by Pratt.
And we had echoes.
I'll go for that.
Okay.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Onto our ordinance. First reading of ordinance 1239. Can I get a motion on that, please?
Make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1239 and ordinance revising Title III Administration, Chapter 31, Ward Elections, 31.02-31.05, Ward Boundaries.
Second.
Discussion. So I want to thank Misty and Stacy with the Fall River County for working on this to get the wards realigned better so that the number of voters in each ward is a lot closer. Misty, could you just kind of give us a recap on, on this, counsel? Misty did send you some paperwork, you know, on what she and Stacy had gone through. Both of them met with Jeff and I, and we were all in agreement that this is necessary to get our wards back in balance.
Jeff wrote a really nice article for the paper explaining this process also. We used the 2020 census data to determine the optimal number of the population for each of our wards and then determined how far off we were, how far we deviated from that optimal number. We did have a large enough discrepancy that we had to make a few changes to realign the number of voters in each ward to have a fair and equal or proportionate distribution. We made a couple changes, but they were fairly minimal. A new ward map is coming. And the changes that we made got our deviation down from a 22% number to a 3.7 number.
So the changes were to, if you approve them, will be to add more voters to Ward Four, taking some from Ward Two, and adding more voters to Ward One, taking some from Ward Three. The important thing in this redistricting is none of the current council members in those wards would be changed by the redistricting. It's simply adding some additional voters from one ward to another ward to balance out the total population.
So when did you say the new maps would be here?
Stacy's working on it now.
Okay.
But the boundaries of the wards are spelled out by legal description in this ordinance.
It'll be like this one here.
Very similar, yep.
Okay.
You'll just be able to see the street names.
Yep, that's, that's better.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Misty. And I'm reminded that it's an ordinance. So it's a roll call. Misty, would you call the roll, please?
JR Huddleston.
Yes.
Debra Johnston.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Linda Varvel.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Onto resolutions. Resolution A 2022-1, Salary, 2022 Salary and Wages.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-1, 2022 Salary and Wage. Second.
Discussion. So this is where we identify and set what the wages are going to be for the upcoming year? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Resolution Item B, Resolution 2022-2, 2022 Part-Time and Seasonal Hourly Rates.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-2, 2022 Part-Time and Seasonal Hourly Rate of Pay. Second.
Discussion.
How come this isn't worth, with all the... Well, it is. Why is there something separate? This part-time?
Yep, that sets the rate for part-time and seasonal without names.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Resolution Item C, Resolution 2022-3, Designation of Depositors and Official Paper.
I'll make a motion to approve 2022-3 Designation of Depositors and Official Newspaper.
Second.
Discussion.
I told Larry, I don't think the paper's here tonight.
Didn't see the paper out there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And our final Resolution B, or D, Resolution 2022-4, Amend Citywide Fee Resolution.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-4 to amend the citywide fee resolution to remove the Southern Hills Golf Course package rates.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, what are we going to do?
This is a cleanup to the last one when they recommended the rate changes for the year as you approved at the last council meeting. On his spreadsheet, Jason put NA in all these packages. I misunderstood and he never clarified that that meant that they were removing the packages. So that's why a new price wasn't dictated for them. So these packages are going away completely.
Was that part of that, I'm assuming, based on what was said, this is a recommendation from the committee? Is that because these packages were not utilized?
Also the discounts that they provided. So they wanted to equalize the rates.
Okay, thank you.
So individually, all of the, you know, the range pass, the single season pass, those are still effective, they just didn't, they removed them from a package deal.
Still a membership? They can still buy?
Absolutely.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Takes us to new business item A. Possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract.
I make a motion to approve and to authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract with Complete Concrete Incorporated, DBA, Complete Contracting, Seoul, Rapid City, South Dakota, the complete project number 2021-001, HS 2020-100, PCN X059, PX05J, contract for AK Utility Main, Water Main and Sanitary Sewer Replacement at a cost of... Oh, that's a big number. Everybody reads it.
Choke it out.
Second.
Discussion. So what you're approving is the city actually signing the contract with Complete Concrete Inc. They're the ones that were awarded the bid for the water and sewer for the highway reconstruction. This is the city of Hot Springs actually signing the contract with them. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item B, a possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract.
I make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract with Complete Contract Concrete Inc., doing business as Complete Contracting, Seoul, Rapid City, South Dakota, to complete project number NH 0385-0035, PCN 07W3, Contract Three, AK Suspended Sidewalk, at a cost of $3,904,538.
Second.
Discussion. So that number's a little bigger, Larry.
Yes. I'll stay with my first one.
This is similar to the item A. This is the city signing the contract for the suspended sidewalk. If you remember, you approved additional funding above what the state of South Dakota had given to the city of Hot Springs to make up the difference for the 3.9. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item C, a possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an amended contract.
Make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an amended contract for residential and municipal solid waste hauling and disposal, along with optional recycle, recycling services, to Seoul-Bitter Sanders sanitation at a monthly service rate of $13.10 per solid waste tote and $4.55 per optional recycling, removing the administrative fee and adding annual inflation adjustment of 3.5%.
Second.
Discussion. So the two significant changes were removing the administrative fee and adding an annual inflation adjustment. That wasn't in the, the first contract. And this allows the rates each year to be reflective of what inflation is.
I'm just wondering if that's a multi-year contract and what the length of the contract is for?
Five years.
Thank you.
Five years with one option to redo, renew for an additional five years.
And that's a 3.5% increase each year over the five years?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item D, a possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the state financial agreement.
Make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the state financial agreement between city of Hot Springs and the state of South Dakota for project number AP 0020-2021 for $1,008.43 as reimbursement for the AWAS upgrade of CPU at the Hot Springs Municipal Airport, funds coming from state airport fuel tax account.
Second.
Discussion.
Just a reminder, we've been talking about the Super AWAS for several months now. The unit was, we believe, was hit by lightning. Have been working to get it fixed for quite some time. We needed a new, essentially motherboard and computer unit to get the, the system operational. What this does is through state funding, it pays for the majority of the replacement of that CPU. And so the, the city's portion of that repair will be about $300 instead of the almost $1,400 to replace the unit.
Can't we turn that into our insurance company?
We actually did turn a portion of it into our insurance company. This portion, we used fuel tax money that's available for these types of things.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item E, possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the one-year agreement.
I make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the one-year agreement for drug and alcohol testing administration program services with Sanford, Bismarck, doing business has Sanford Health Occupational Medical Medicine Clinic at an annual membership fee of $129.
Second.
Discussion.
I guess one question. This is just the, the membership fee, so the actual cost of testing and sample collection is over and above this.
That is correct. They will provide our consortium services to make sure that we stay in compliance and they manage our random pool for the DOT testing. So they won't do all city of Hot Springs testing, will still follow the same process for those types of testing. These are just for employees that are part of that federal motor carrier safety administration compliance requirements.
Thank you. Will they be going to Fall River Hospital?
Yes, they go to Fall River Hospital for their specimen collection.
Okay.
But they can go other places if needed.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item F, possible motion discussion to confirm the intent of the city to cover the following police department reserve officers.
With an update.
Thank you. To, to exclude Darcy Engel from this motion?
I make a motion to confirm the intent of the city council to cover the following police department reserve officers, unpaid volunteers for workman comp purposes in 2022, Mark Hayne and Ryan Walz.
Second, a motion.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? New business item G. I don't want everybody to jump at this one. Possible motion discussion to renew the following municipal operating agreements.
Make a motion. I make a motion to renew the following municipal operating agreement for alcoholic beverage license holders for 2022. American Legion RL and RB, BW Gas and Convenience Retail LLC, doing business at Yesway, number 1177 PL, Big Bats LLC RB, Big Time Pizza Inc. RB and RW, Black Hills Pizza Hut Inc., doing business at Pizza Hut of Hot Springs RB, Buffalo Dreamer Restaurant RB and RW, CS Inc., doing business at Winter Circle, Lanes and Games Casino 2 RL and RB, Consour Corp., DBA Bourbon Country RL, Dakota Mart Inc., doing business at Dakota Mart Gas RB, Dakota Mart Inc., doing business at Lynn's Dakota Mart PL, Dolgen Midwest LLC, doing business at Dollar General Store RB and RW, Family Dollar Stores of South Dakota LLC, doing business at Family Dollar Store number 27126 RB and RW, Frankie's Place LLC RB and RL, Good Karma Couture LLC, doing business at Morning Sunshine RB and RW, Hanging J LLC, doing business at Red Rock River Resort RR, HP Loft Properties LLC, RB RW and RL, pending, MG Oil Company, doing business at Corner Pantry number 11 and 11B RB, Alex Innovant Schmunk Inc., doing business at Sunny Super Foods PL, COHS Southern Hills Pro Shop RB and RW. Lost my line. Springs Hotel LLC, doing business at Springs Coffee Kiosk RB and RW, Durkin Olga Turnquist doing business at Springs Restaurant RB and RW, and Woolies Western Grill RL RB and RW.
Second.
Give that boy a golden star.
Discussion.
Good job.
Sam couldn't have done it any better.
Now, this does not include, we still tabled the other store, 22788, correct?
The Dollar General that was discussed last time?
Yes.
Yes, that's, that's still tabled for, for the discussion.
This Dollar General store does have a store number. It's 18181 is the number of this store?
We can add that to the motion.
Okay.
I'll confirm the number.
Okay.
Linda provided it to me earlier and we can add that number to the motion if it makes comfortable.
All right. And just a reminder for the public, because this one certainly was very long-winded. Previous council, previous attorneys have advised us that the council needs to read the motions in their entirety. The folks that are watching, that will be watching online, if they don't have the agenda in front of them and we simply say, "A motion to approve new business item A," they don't have a clue what that's about. So I appreciate the council stepping up and reading these. And it's, you know, as you rotate through these longer ones, that's certainly, you know, share of the wealth.
And maybe if we didn't read them, they'd all come to the council meeting and listen to us. But maybe not, too.
Any discussion?
Linda, you were saying, what store number were you talking about?
Okay, the Dollar General store on University Avenue is 18181.
Okay, and the one over by my house is 22788?
The one over by your house isn't included in this.
No, it's not included, but I just wanted to make sure.
It's got a different number.
What's that?
What's that?
It's got a different number.
Okay.
And this, my motion's for renewal.
Okay, I'm done.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item H, possible motion, discussion to approve 2022 parades.
I make a motion to approve 2022 parades, Fourth of July Parade, Freedom Ride Parade, Hot Springs High School Homecoming Parade, December Parade of Light, and Hot Springs High School Graduation Parade.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item I, possible motion, discussion to select, to set election date.
I make a motion to set election date has June 7, 2022, and combine with the Fall River County and the Hot Springs School District and approve the combined election agreement with Fall River County.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item J, possible motion, discussion to approve contract 2022-2.
Make a motion to approve contract 2022-2 between City of Hot Springs and Battle Mountain Humane Society for Animal Boarding Services in 2022.
Second.
Discussion. And of note in this one, the monthly costs for Battle Mountain have gone up from 645? 650? To 1,000. If you approve this contract.
Are we using the other vet clinic out there by Coffee Cup?
No.
Well, okay.
So why did it go up to 1,000?
They have been overwhelmed with the number of cats in particular from Hot Springs and other animal control issues.
Their costs run around at least 10,000 a month, so we were really getting an exorbitantly good deal.
We did review and discuss this in administrative and finance. And that report was provided at the last meeting as well.
There's a question in there somewhere, Craig.
The mayor's wife loves cats.
Oh, boy.
We could see if he'd maybe house a few.
They are looking to find volunteers to support a coalition in town where someone does reach out and contact ranchers, farmers, and individuals who would take cats. So they are looking to solve the problem and more discussion is being had.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item K, possible motion, discussion to approve extending contract 2020-3.
Make a motion to approve extending contract 2020-3 between the City of Hot Springs and Jessica Luther for meter reading services in 2022, option year two.
Second motion. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item L, possible motion, discussion to approve contract 2022-4.
I make a motion to approve contract 2022-4 between the City of Hot Springs and Teresa Moss for the Police Department and City Hall Services in 2022.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item M, possible motion, discussion to approve contract 2022-5.
I make a motion to approve the contract 2022-5 between the Evans Plunge Mineral Springs and Lori McNair for fitness instruction at the Evans Plunge Mineral Springs facility.
Second.
Discussion.
Is this just for membership like it was or?
Yes.
Okay.
One annual two-person membership to Evans Plunge Mineral Springs, two adult punch cards and one youth punch card, total value 685.
And do we know how often she works?
I believe that her classes are two times a week, but don't quote me on it. Does that sound right, Linda? Two or three times a week?
I don't know.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I could find out for you for sure.
I'm just curious.
Oh, it's three times per week is what it says on here.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item N, possible motion, discussion to approve a plat of McMahon Track 1.
Make a motion to approve a plat of McMahon Track 1, McMahon Track 2, and McMahon Track 3 of Block 4, Grand View Place addition to Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota, formerly lots 20 through 24, Block 4.
Second motion. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item O, possible motion, discussion to reappoint James Forbord.
Make a motion to reappoint James Forbord to the Planning Commission for a five-year term, 2022 through 2026.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item P, possible motion, discussion to reappoint Deanne Arneson and Ken Tonziger.
I make a motion to reappoint Deanne Arneson and Ken Tonziger. I hope I said that right. To the cemetery board for a five-year term from 2022 to 2026.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item Q, possible motion, discussion to approve change order number one.
I make a motion to approve change order number one on the 2021 Martin Street Sewer and Water Improvement Project for $5,116.07. New adjusted contract amount is $198,402,67.
Second.
Discussion.
Is that for the rock that he ran into or do we know why we had to change it?
The information that was given to us said that when he came to the connection, it was eight-inch pipe to a short distance that wasn't previously on the map. And they had to change from eight, six-inch to eight-inch with all the connectors.
I remember that now. Thank you, Deb.
And this was submitted after the project was completed.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item R, possible motion, discussion to approve the travel training requests.
Make a motion to approve travel training request for police officer Jack Peterson to attend reciprocity training in Pierce, South Dakota on January 30, '22 to February 4 of '22.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Committee reports, administrative and finance, JR?
There is no admin and finance meeting today. It was moved to January 18 at 1:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Airport advisory, Bill?
Airport advisory will meet this Thursday, the 6th of January, 8:00 a.m. at the airport.
Thank you. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Larry?
Next meeting will be January 13, 7:00 p.m. at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Historic preservation, Deborah?
They meet this Wednesday at the Mueller Center, January 5 at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you. Evans Plunge, Linda?
We will be meeting January 13 at noon at the Evans Plunge.
Thank you. Parks Recreation, Larry?
Next meeting will be this Wednesday, the 5th at 2:00 p.m. at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Planning and zoning, Deborah?
They will meet next January 19, Wednesday, at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Thank you. Public safety, Bill, JR?
Reminder to everyone, this is our new meeting day and time. Public safety will meet this Thursday at 2:00 p.m. at the Mueller Center, January 6. All are welcome.
Thank you. Public works, Craig? And you got everybody else's time.
So we'll be here for a while. Dave's the one that kept records because he is going to be here tonight. I'll have to go over what I remember, so it might not be complete, so it might be short. Leasing royalties with Simon Materials. We talked to each other again, came up with the conclusion either we lease it or sell the property to Hills because it's landlocked. So it's a discussion we continue discussing until we figure it out one way or another. The mobile veterinarian service, we all determined she needs to get a vendor's license so she can operate through town like the pet lady that goes around washing your dogs and cats or whatever she washes, and the mobile food vendors that go around town. Contracted city snow removal, that's a new project we talked about, but we have to write something up about it to see how it would affect and work around town. This is for individuals that go around plowing snow for taxpayers. And we need to come up with some kind of conclusion to where they don't just push it out in the middle of a drive-through and leave it there where the city has to come back and clean everything up after them. So it's something Dave and I got to put our heads together and write up and bring it back to the city council. Everything else we talked about, we're trying to eliminate a lot of this because we don't need it, but some of it we have to keep because it's ongoing. I really don't have nothing else. Because, you know, the stuff pending, you know, Battle Mountain Road that we talked about, the tennis courts, I guess they got timers put on there. It's in the bills, so we must be fixed. That's tennis court, yeah. The Grand View drainage, I guess we've got some complaints because it's muddy up there and we can't put millings down in the wintertime. So I guess maybe we could put gravel down, I don't know. You know, it freezes so fast, it's hard to, you know, determine what to put down. I know we can't do millings unless it's summertime. And it is not complete because we have to pour concrete and make grates for all the culverts they put in so it don't plug them up. Holes and cracks in the sidewalk on Jennings. I guess we got a board, we got a new hole in the sidewalk down there. And the city put a board over it, Tracy's end. We need to get somebody to crawl up in the covert and we need to put a board on the bottom with a two-by-four holding it up so we can pour something in there to fix it until they repair, remove the sidewalk and put a new one down. I don't know if we've worked on that since then. I know we talked about it and we passed it on to whoever passes it on to the street department.
Is that the hole in the sidewalk in front of, what is that, Blue Moon?
Yes.
Well, that's what I thought, but somebody said there's a new one.
There's two of them.
Oh.
Right? There's one there and then there's one further down the sidewalk in front of.
In front of the Hellfoot Store.
The one at Mini Moons had, we had, just held up on being able to pour concrete with the weather. That was the big one there, but I'll go look at it again this week.
Oh, okay.
Well, they better do it before Wednesday because it's supposed to be like 14 below and snow. I don't think they can pour concrete then.
No, it's not going to be warm in there.
Street projects complete, that'll be wiped off our slate. Wastewater treatment plant, that's an ongoing situation because there's a lot to be done down there. It was kind of let go for a while. And the guy's doing a fantastic job it's done. Multiple house water services, that's an ongoing thing too. Something planning and zoning talked about and now it's in our ballpark. So we got to determine what we think's best for the taxpayers in the city because our employees are going to have to, you know, go forth with it, whatever. And that's code enforcement, nuisance. We talked about the person we hired quite a lot. And that's something that'll be coming up again this year. There was a lot of discussion about it. Not everybody is happy. And I'll be truthfully honest with you, the worst that wasn't happy, Deborah seemed okay.
I think we need to let him do his job instead of piecemealing things.
His contract's up, so we'll have to go forth with that.
When is his contract up?
It's the end of the year. We budgeted for it for this year too, but.
Yeah, but we.
So is the contract signed through '22 or up to the end of '21?
I can find it, sure.
That was the, one of the main questions.
I thought it was through the end of the year.
I thought so, I thought so too, because we budgeted for it.
It was to the end of December.
Well, we, council budgets for the ACO every year, but as far as a contract that I sign and he signs.
Are we talking about code enforcement or animal control?
Code enforcement.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
We can talk about the animal control officer, but he's not on my agenda.
Thank you.
But their contract was till the end of December. The council's got to vote whether they want him back, so. And that's a long discussion before we do that, in my opinion.
See, we need to find out what that date is.
I might get a note right now and I'll send it to you.
I guess that's it for now. There's a lot of old business, but it's stuff I've already gone over for a long time. And we didn't go over it at our meeting. That's it. Our next meeting's January 11, 1 o'clock at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Craig?
Fireway.
When it comes to code enforcement, what I'd asked Scott Soke, he's the one that's working with the person that we hired for code enforcement, is to prepare for council a report of how many people he reached out to, how many responded, how many of the notices were corrected so that you can make an informed decision on whether you want to hire the same individual for another year or if you want to look in a different direction. Without the data from the work that he's done, we don't know whether he met your expectations or not. So that's what we talked with Scott about to get us that, report that data to share with you so you can make an informed decision of whether you want to continue with this individual or go with a different, go in a different direction. And I'm not suggesting we should, but until we have the data, we don't know.
Problem I had, and I'm going to be short and sweet, is he sent out all the letters, but he's never been back. Scott's been doing all the other work, which saves the city money, but why do we need this guy if he isn't continuing with anything that's going on that Scott's doing it all?
That's what I was talking about, about piecemealing it. We need to let him do the full job. But I understand Scott's willingness to do what he can to save the city. But I understand Scott's willingness to do what he can to save the city money, but Scott's got a full agenda with the building, code enforcements and stuff as well, and all the building permits, so. And he's been, Scott has been very happy with the results that came out of those letters. There's been a lot of cleanup and a lot of, you know, and there's always going to be those that haven't quite caught up and haven't got things done because of weather or whatever circumstances. But Scott has voiced that he's been very happy with the results that did come from those letters. But it is good to have those statistics and information to know what we did get out of it all. And what still needs to be done.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Golf Course Committee isn't meeting. Course is closed.
I have assumed that role though, so from this point forward, I will take the committee.
Jeff, I chatted with Jeff, and he's had some pretty extensive experience with golf courses, so I asked if he would take over meeting with the Golf Course Committee and report to council. Jeff will take that going forward. Finance Officer, Misty?
Thank you, Mayor. In your monthly financial reports, you have financial reports through the 29th of December. These are not all of 2021 entries and are not final 2021 numbers. In fact, they're not even final end-of-december numbers. But you can see where we're at year-to-date on the Profit and Loss Summary Report for each of our funds. The only fund currently showing a loss is Hot Springs Capital Improvements, which we've been spending money for the design of the sidewalk and we don't get any revenue in that fund. All other funds show a gain. The Budget-to-Actual Report shows you which departments have reached their revenue and expenditure budgets. We did have a final appropriation that I just entered today, became effective today, so these numbers don't include those additional appropriations. The Cash Balance Reports for the two main accounts, which is our Wells Fargo account and our Bank of the West checking accounts, and then the investment accounts that show all the cash assets of the city, where they're located and how they're invested. We do have one CD, it's our wastewater debt service reserve CD at First Interstate Bank that is maturing February 19th. I am hoping that rates will be a little bit better than they have been the last several times we've looked at them, and more reports to come as we get closer to that maturity date. I like to provide a little summary at the year-end about the key objectives when it comes to financial reporting and why we do the things we do the way we do. The two key objectives are to see if current-year revenues are sufficient to finance current-year expenses and to demonstrate whether resources are being used according to legally adopted budgets and plans. The City of Hot Springs uses the modified accrual basis for accounting. In the simplest form, this means we recognize revenues when they become available and measurable. And with few exceptions, we record expenditures when liabilities are incurred. In order to be compliant with generally accepted accounting principles, which you'll often hear us sum up as GAAP, established by the Government Accounting Standards Boards, which we often refer to as GASB, we track, calculate, and post a number of additional entries after the last day in our 12-month accounting period, which ended on the 31st of December. Payables, receivables, prepaid expenses, and various accrual calculations are posted to ensure we're accurately representing the financial condition of the city at year-end. These entries occur throughout the first couple months in 2022. In compliance with state law, our annual report is presented to you, the governing body, by the first meeting in May. Once again, Cadel Thorstensen, LLP, will complete our annual financial statements and audit report. They do an excellent job for the city, and I'm thankful for the support and guidance they provide during this time and also throughout the year whenever questions arise. It is beneficial to the city to work with a forum that knows our processes, our reports, and our software systems. You approved in this batch of current claims the 2022 approved budgeted donation payments to Prairie Hills Transit, Shed Co., Hot Springs Senior Meals, Hot Springs Senior Citizen Center. You'll also see the annual payment, or did see the annual payment made, to Dispatch. And the volunteer fire department receives monthly remittances for their total 2022 subsidy. Those payments are made in the bills in between batches that are approved monthly. I talk a little bit about redistricting, which I provided a summary for already. Also want to remind you of the 2022 Legislative Rib Dinner and Municipal Government Day in Pierce. If you're interested in attending, our SVPs are required by the 25th of January. The event is February 1st and continues on to Wednesday, the 2nd. Talked a little bit about the change from Black Hills Occupational Medicine to Sanford Occupational Medicine to provide those DOT-approved testing consortium services that you approved tonight. Thanks for approving that agreement. Talk about the Martin Street Sewer and Water Improvement Project. You approved the final, the one and only change order for that project. And now the next step in the assessment begins. If you remember, the city was petitioned by property owners to do this improvement, and they agreed to an assessment for the cost. When the bids came in for the project, you'll remember they were pretty high, higher than we anticipated. And a letter was sent by certified mail to all those property owners, giving them another opportunity because the original engineers' estimates were not quite as high. Now that we have finished the improvements, the next step in the process is determine the applicable interest rate. We're recommending 5% using data from the three banking institutions that we currently utilize. We're planning to set and schedule the public hearing for the assessment role at the second meeting in January. The public hearing will be on February 7th. We'll need to publish the notice in the newspaper and mail that notice, the proposed assessment resolution, to each affected property owner not less than 10 days or more than 20 days prior to the hearing. After council adopts the resolution, it will be published and become effective 20 days after publication. And once effective, we prepare the special record of assessment, which is then mailed to property owners and certified to the county auditor for inclusion in the next-year property tax bill. After that collection begins and continues for the term of 10 years. On the next council agenda, you'll be asked to review and approve a new intergovernmental contract, IGC for short, with our insurer, the South Dakota Public Insurance Alliance. They were established in 1987 in response to increasingly volatile commercial insurance market for public entities seeking coverage. It's member-owned and offers broad, specialized coverage for all of our insurance needs. Our agreement provides the needed coverage with stable pricing, risk-control surveys every three years, property valuation reviews every four years, loss-control surveys, online and in-person training, an employment practices hotline, and a new government practices hotline. They're very easy to work with and have always been quick to respond to all of our needs. So I hope you approve that new agreement. As a reminder, the next meeting will be on Tuesday, the 18th, as opposed to Monday, the 17th, due to the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. I'd like to wrap up by saying that I'm proud of the accomplishments we achieved last year. It's my hope that 2022 continues in the same direction. Undoubtedly, it will go fast with a lot of big projects I think you can all be proud to be a part of. Thanks for all you do to make this happen, and Happy New Year.
Any questions for Misty?
Where did we have to appropriate money to? General Fund?
I'm sorry?
The money we had to appropriate to is at General Fund?
Are you talking for the 2022 budget?
You said you just had to put some in the.
Yeah, so the last supplemental appropriation ordinance that you approved in November, that became effective on the 30th of December. So I did those entries into our accounting software today. So when these reports were printed, those additional appropriations had not posted yet.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, Misty. City Administrator, Jeff?
I guess first and foremost, I'm back 100%, family, dogs, and all. So no more gallivanting for the city administrator for a while, anyway. Thank you for your patience while we moved up here. And yes, I was looking forward to coming back. Anyway. I guess, secondly, the, we are doing a hours of operation and labor review for Evans Plunge, which I, my goal right now is to have something back to council by the 31st, by the 31st of January, meet our council. And if I can get it back sooner, we will. But we need to look at that. We've got a lot of issues we need to deal with on that one. The other thing is we are putting in, we're renewing, regenerating, restarting back up again the city column in the paper so that every week we'll have something from a department in there focusing on what they're doing, what we're doing in different areas. So that's something that we'll bring back. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Any questions for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome back.
Thanks for coming back. Pleasure's mine.
So I don't have any mayor's report for you?
Make motion adjourned.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.